All right, we'll call the meeting of the City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. All of the City Councilmen are present. If you'll stand, we will say our pledge of allegiance. Chief Sanders, you want to lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
I will be, sir.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, item three are presentations and recognitions. There are none to be special tonight. Everybody can be recognized. Item four are public comments. I did not have anyone sign up to make public comments. Item five are staff reports. This is a presentation of the implementation of the traffic management plan.
Counsel, what I'd like to do is provide you a update on the progress that we've made on the traffic management plan, which is our long-range planning tool for transportation in the city. The city's transportation philosophy is centered on maximizing mobility throughout the city, not only for residents but also business owners and operators and visitors alike. We feel that for maintaining a high quality of life, moving people and goods from one point to another in the safest, most efficient manner possible is what defines mobility. It should also consider all modes of transportation as applicable. Our mobility goals include safety, that's our first priority, reducing congestion in travel times, moving along our corridors, and also providing a variety of options such as bicycle pedestrian facilities, perhaps transit or trails. As I mentioned a second ago, that our traffic management plan is our tool for formulating goals and applying them to our needs here at the city. It's our vision as a long-term plan that provides a roadmap for development of a comprehensive transportation network that the city can use to better manage the existing interim and projected transportation-related issues as it continues to grow. So as we grow, we generate more traffic, creates more congestion, and we need to do what we can to prevent that from getting ahead of us. We originally adopted a traffic management plan in 2005 and then updated it January 2011 is when y'all adopted the updated version. And with that, we created an implementation plan to prioritize the projects that were identified within. We came up with a short-term, a medium-term, and long-term schedule, if you'd like to call it. So the traffic management plan identified where we started in 2008, and on the map to the right shows the colors of level of service. It's a performance measurement tool commonly used to measure mobility within an area. And you'll see that there's a lot of green and yellow, some orange, and that's okay for now. But where are we going? The plan identifies where we will be in 2025 if we do nothing. If we make no improvements to deal with the growth and congestion, you'll see that there is more red and orange on the level of service map. And you can see in the traffic volumes listed that the number of cars on the road, vehicles traveling our major corridors are going to drastically increase. So increase traffic volumes, reduce capacity, and also increase the wear and tear, which means we have to spend more money to fix those up. Some of the short-term projects that were identified in the plan on this particular slide have been completed. Most of them are intersection improvements. Highway six and Murphy Road had most of the improvements that we made. The intersections improvements included additional lanes for travel as well as improved intelligent transportation system equipment, helped improve mobility. The last project on this slide, Texas Parkway, a cart road, that's in progress. The construction has been let by Tech dot. It's going to start in a couple months. The rest of the short-term projects include a couple that we consider to be future at this time, such as Independence. That's a project that we're looking to start in the very near future. Vicksburg is an in-progress project where we're working on, the design is completed. We're working on completing an interlocal agreement to make that one happen. Hurricane Lane is in design with Tech dot. Those two projects have alternative funding sources. Hurricane, for example, has federal contribution. You'll also notice that developers are involved in completing projects that were identified in the traffic management plan. In the medium term, you'll see some more future projects. A couple are currently in progress, one of which is developer-driven, Sienna Springs connection to University Boulevard. Trammell Fresno is also a federally, well, it was a federally funded project. The funding was changed to state funding. Minor detail. On this slide, you'll see one major connection that was completed, and that was University Boulevard all the way to US 59. Although that particular connection happens outside of the city, in Sugar Land, in the county, it still impacts us and our residents and our businesses. It provides a connection to our network so people can get from point A to point B, like I mentioned before. So moving forward, some of the projects that are left to be completed that are within our jurisdiction may be considered by the Bond Exploratory Committee, which will be considering a package for 2014. The Fort Bend County Mobility Program, as we discussed at a prior meeting, will be considering some of the projects that we proposed for consideration. And then also, the regional transportation plan ran at the HGAC, the Houston-Galveston Area Council level, and they consider all of the proposed projects throughout the region to see how all the networks interconnect. And by submitting our projects for the regional transportation plan, make us potentially eligible for future transportation improvement program funding, otherwise known as TIP funding. So that's where we're at, the traffic management plan.
Valerie, I know that a developer has basically put all of the Shenlo property under contract now, and their plans are to extend the toll road all the way over to Sienna Ranch Road, I guess. And then aren't there some, and there's some construction underway right now, that will connect LJ Parkway somewhere back in there to that section of the toll road so that you would basically get on University and come LJ Parkway and get over to the toll road, right?
The answer, the short answer is yes. The original concept was for the county to participate in a two-lane asphalt road from Sienna Parkway to Sienna Ranch, which would tie into LJ Parkway. Last conversations I've had with the toll road authority, they are actually looking at the possibility of actually extending the toll road lanes instead of a temporary road, and they actually are considering a grade separation at the Sienna Parkway, too, and seeing if that could be funded as part of that. And then it would tie into Sienna Ranch, which would be your connection to LJ Parkway.
And there a bridge that has-
The bridge is under construction now.
But that's under construction now, isn't it?
Correct. That is under construction now, and that should be done in the next few months.
With the LJ Parkway connection, that's really to Sienna Springs, right? Because Sienna Springs stops there, right?
Well, Sienna Springs is a direct connection, you're correct. But along the future toll road route south of Sienna Springs, there would be another east-west connection there in that toll road right away.
Now that the developer has got that land under contract, they're not dealing with somebody that was kind of adversarial at the time. They now want to see it done, so.
Yeah, but Sienna Springs would be the straight shot.
Yeah, when will that be open for that connection right there through LJ Parkway to Sienna Springs?
With Sienna Springs?
Yeah.
By the end of this year, it should be open. On the current schedule, around end of November, beginning of December.
And it stops, and it's almost like you can walk to the other side.
Yeah.
Correct.
And that'll be awesome. I mean-
It's basically a bypass to Highway six there.
It is. And it's what we used, probably was close to what we used to call the Highway six bypass, but yeah. But I think that's an important connector. I mean, you get all that people, all the traffic off of basically 59 coming through and getting on the Fort Bend toll road to go to the medical center and such, rather than going 59 and 610 and all that.
Yeah, it's going to be a great help, particularly when you look at the projections for traffic volumes on Highway six, which are-
Especially in the morning, it takes someone, it takes someone almost 25 minutes to get to Highway six and 59 from Sienna.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. All right, thank you all. Any other questions, Valerie? Scott? Thank you, Valerie. Item six is a consent agenda, is our motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Move that down.
Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion. Councilman Smith made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. Seven A is a zoning public hearing.
Seven A, one. An ordinance of City of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of a 0.9192 acre tract of land from LC 3 Retail District to R1 Single Family Residential District, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City as adopted by ordinance number 081-1 on January 19, 1981, as amended, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Have there been any changes?
No, sir. No change.
This is the second and final reading. Is there a motion?
This person that wrote the protest letter?
Support letter.
Huh?
It is a letter of support for-
Support.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Ms. White.
Yeah. Because the letter kind of read like she thought it was going to be commercial, and it's been going to R1.
Well, it is currently zone for commercial, but it will go to residential, and she is in support of that.
Okay.
Your motion.
Yeah, move that down.
Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion. Councilman Emery made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Seven A, two.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of 4.845 acres of land from LC 3 Retail District to PD Plan Development District, regulating and restricting the development use of property within such PD Plan Development District, amending the zoning district map of the City of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Any changes?
The one change, the material reference from insulated metal panels to stucco, and that's the only change.
Yeah, I make a motion to move forward.
Councilman Allen Cap made the motion. Councilman Emery made the second. Any discussion? Vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. What can I say, Lawrence? Look at this back row guy back here, huh?
We need to get him up on the front row.
Well, we didn't have any questions for him. Are there some that you want to think of?
Let me give me a minute.
I mean, we got the guys, they got the whole group back here. All right, item seven B are public hearings and related actions. There are none. Item eight are appointments. There are none tonight. Item nine are authorization. Nine A is to consider awarding a contract for stormwater management program services. Valerie, back up.
Yes. The Texas Commission on Environmental Quality is expected to issue a new stormwater-
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
A new stormwater permit in around the December of this year timeframe, maybe January. We expect that we'll need to completely rewrite our program, which will need to be restructured and include new requirements that the permit will put on us. And we're interested in contracting with Jones and Carter, who has provided administration services to us previously. We feel that they're the most qualified firm to do this for us, and we're asking that you approve a contract to write our new program.
Did this contract have to be bid out?
Yes, it was. And there were three respondents, Lockwood, Andrews, and Nuna, TRC Environmental Corporation, and Jones and Carter Incorporated.
Did this, what does that committee call? The-
The public utilities committee?
No, no, no. The consultant. Yeah. Did this one came through?
No, actually, it did not. This is not considered a professional service. We actually went through the bid process. A professional engineering designation is not required.
Yeah.
We have a motion, so we can-
No, we don't.
I moved it out.
And a representative from the consultant is here.
Second.
Second.
Okay, now, we're currently, we're currently doing something in this area already.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, we currently have a program-
And our engineer is?
We currently have Jones and Carter helping us to administer the program. The program is already six years old. The original permit was for five years, and it expired in August of 2012.
Oh, I understand. And my question is about consistency when we're dealing with something as complicated as-
Yes.
-the plan. But this brings all the utility districts on board in relationship or just separate firm?
Well, that's a good question.
And who pays for this?
We're intending to, our program is going to be written for Missouri City as a MS4, a municipal separate stormwater system operator. Now, we have previously, through interlocal agreements, partnered with 15 MUDs, and through that agreement, have submitted our report in conjunction with them. In a sense, we act as like an umbrella report that's required annually. It's annual reporting. We intend to go back to those MUDs and ask if they would like to continue participating with us and sign interlocal agreements again. However, that is separate somewhat from the actual report writing itself.
Well, but I thought we were doing the same thing with stormwater as we were doing with groundwater in a relationship to the MUDs, and we should be.
At the time that the original interlocal agreements were signed, there was discussion on council on whether there should be some kind of a fee associated with this, and at that time, the discussion was no, there should not be. So the city has been paying for this out of the general fund on that. But it is something, because we looked at all kind of options previously on what portion of their tax rate is applicable to drainage and so forth and so on. But at this time, everything's paid for out of general fund.
So how many, how many, how many MUDs we have?
Fifteen of the MUDs.
And how many MUDs do we have?
Inside the city limits, 22.
And only 15 that participate?
That's correct. The others have their own program.
So, and so you got, how many you say, 22?
22.
22, 15. So you got seven out there with seven different programs-
Yes, sir.
-and seven different prices.
Yes, sir.
Costing the people in those districts seven different rates, okay? Whereas under the groundwater, they all are participating, they're all under one umbrella, okay? But we need, you know, we need to see what we can do to encourage those others to participate, because in the long run, it benefits the people in those districts, okay? And does the state still hold us accountable to the activities of those districts?
Yes, sir, because of the interconnectiveness of the storm sewer system and the drainage system.
We need to figure out what it is we need to do to make it work, or at least come back to council and tell us what is, why it's not working, because, and you know, if something goes south with one of their programs, you know, ideally what it's saying to me is that it's going to come back on the city, okay? And I'm not, I don't want, and I live in the city, I don't want to be responsible for people that don't want to participate. And I don't think any other citizen wants to.
Does that an affirmative answer, that it would come back to us?
It's not definite, but it is possible, because the way the drainage system starts, it starts with the street. And we own the street, we own the stage one of the inlets, then you have the storm sewers owned by various different agencies, you have the outfalls owned by different agencies. But it is possible that something could come back to the city.
Is there a reason why those seven have decided to have a, you know, separate agreement, or?
They just felt at that time it was best for them to go on their own and do their own, their own plan.
So, Scott, so for those seven, have you approached their firm? I mean, their attorneys?
We approached everybody originally when we first signed everybody up, and just, you know, we got responses back and agreements from those 15. We are more than happy to approach everybody again with this next phase on that and see if everybody wants to participate. And then originally, for the first year or so, several of the different participating agencies actually thought about withdrawing and doing their own program on that, but everybody stayed in on that.
Have you a sense as to why the pushback on the seven?
They just felt it was more cost-effective for them to participate in their own program, and their consultants convinced them of that.
From your standpoint, does the mayor?
Well, if we could, I mean, of course, this is money coming out of the general fund.
Yeah.
If we could have some kind of participation fee, then it would definitely help the general fund on that. But there is a slight exposure if somebody has a discharge, an illicit discharge, and tracking it to its source and who's responsible for it.
But the point of it is, is those same people are paying for this out of the general fund.
That is correct.
Okay, and if those districts want to be that possessive, then they're really costing the citizens in those districts.
Yeah.
And that's the same conclusion we came to when we were doing the groundwater thing.
And maybe we need to name who those seven are. You remember who they are?
I honestly don't remember off the top of my head.
Goodness.
You know?
Valerie, you remember who they are?
I can only think of one.
Huh?
I can only think of one.
And I could say that it's probably only technically six, because out of those 22 districts, one of them is Wicked Two, which does not have a drainage responsibility.
Well, I can understand Wicked Two.
And so it's really only six. I forgot about Wicked Two. Little bit different animal on that.
Well, I'm like, you know, Mayor Pro Tim White. I think citizens in those districts might need to know that.
We can definitely get that list.
Very good. Any other questions?
I think, you know, just for those districts, or is there any communication that's going to the HOAs of those MUDs?
There is nothing going to the HOAs unless, unless it's part of a public education campaign. There is a public education campaign, you know, the stickers you see on inlets, don't, you know, dump your pet waste or your leaves on inlets and stuff like that. But there's no, my knowledge, information going to HOAs about the specific program.
We can get that to you if you want.
I can see where this is headed, and I think there should be some verbiage that's delicate, served up delicately.
To the HOAs?
Yeah.
Okay, just get us a list. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item nine B is to consider authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement between Fort Bend County and the cities of Rosenberg, Stafford, Sugar Land-
No, no, we have to vote on this contract.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We need to vote on it. All those in favor? Yeah. Motion carries. They had a motion and a second. You had that?
Thank you.
Anyway, relating to the Fort Bend County Pet Mega Adoption Event.
Yes, sir. Again, this year, the City of Missouri City is willing to participate in the Pet Mega Adoption Event. There is a governing interlocal agreement between us and Fort Bend County now, and with every specific project, then we are required to enter into a project interlocal agreement. That's what this is. So the event is on November the 2nd at the Fort Bend County Fairgrounds. It is from 2:00 to 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Missouri City has pledged to provide four dogs and two cats, and there are discounted adoption fees for, for the event. For, I believe it's $40 for everyone, everyone but senior citizens, and they determine senior citizens are age 60 and over.
Oh, kids.
I think that's everybody from there, saying on down.
No, Danny down there.
He needs to come over here.
Yeah.
And they will be able to adopt at half price.
At half price?
At half price.
Those seniors need it free.
But the, the animals are all spayed or neutered and have their shots and everything, so there's nothing else that needs to be done. So they just need to adopt. So the fee is just a minimal charge to cover those.
I know it is. Susan, have we gotten rid of the guinea pig yet?
No.
So we got, we got a guinea pig that we can bring.
Why?
Huh? Yeah.
He was still in the-
That'd be unusual, wouldn't it? Missouri City is going to have a guinea pig there.
I make a motion to adopt.
And they don't have to be voted, they don't have to be shot or neutered or anything else.
I make a motion to adopt. Before you start getting personal up here.
Maybe they should be neutered.
Oh, sure it does. She has a, she has a guinea pig.
Well, I know she has a guinea pig.
In the backyard of, no, it's somebody, and he's taking up residence in this person's backyard, and they're looking for a young child who would like to have a guinea pig. All right, who seconded it?
I did.
All right, there was a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item C is to consider awarding a contract for the construction of a new 1.5 million gallon ground storage tank at the Regional Water Treatment Plant.
Good morning, Council. How are you today?
Yes, sir.
Just want to let you know this is a contract for 1.5 million gallon storage tank. It'll be our second reservoir out there at the surface water treatment plant. The project was bid, it was designed by EHT, our consultant, and then we bid the project, and that came in exceptionally well. We had four bidders and low bid, low responsive bidder, ALCO, who has built these before, but also their tank manufacturer is preload, who is the same tank manufacturer we had on the first phase of the project. Brandon Harrison from ALCO is here tonight with us, so you can see him. And bids came in exceptionally well. Between bid one and two, it was only $20,000 separated between the two. And so we're real excited about that and the fact that we have good competitive edge, and that was great. One thing I do want to share is that it's needed because we can have a second reservoir on site to be able to keep and maintain our first reservoir, take it down in the winter, do our examination, make sure it's right, while still keeping service to our customer, and then bring it back online, and we'll have additional storage. And we can then alternate and have a good maintenance program to keep the life expectancy of these tanks up. Additionally, is that funding is actually coming from the GRP, which is through the, through the users and through the fee, so there is no impact to the general fund.
Don just asked that question, might repeat it. He was whispering to me where the money is coming from.
Yes, it's coming from the GRP fee and associated with that for our users there, so it's no general fund impact.
No general fund expenses. That's an easy one. Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second. I have a-
Yes, sir.
-question. Every time opportunity like this, we all wanted to make it available to our citizens, but unfortunately, you know, this is a very highly specialized skills that we have to outsource it from somewhere else. So I'm thinking, Scott, you and I talked about this, so is there a way that we come up with an idea that, that we request or ask the general contractor to make the best effort to yield at least 10% or 20% of local people? I do understand that, you know, there's some specialized skills that we cannot find it over here, but lower-level skills, I mean, we, you know, like cleaning up or less require knowledge. I mean, can we require general contractor to use Missouri City citizen for the jobs, opportunities? Do you understand what I'm saying?
In this particular case, as far as the requirement, there was no condition of that sort in the invitation for bid, so I don't believe, and Caroline can correct me if I'm wrong, that under state law, you could retroactively put that requirement on the contract, that we can always ask. But as far as a legal requirement, I think the option would only be reject all the bids or award as is, that we couldn't put a legal requirement on that.
And that is correct. I did confirm with the purchasing manager prior to the meeting what the specific criteria were that were included in addition to those required under the statute, and if, and asked specifically if there were any criteria in reference to Missouri City residents or location of business. I even asked that question as well, and he indicated they were not. So at this juncture, since they were not included in the bid, it would be inappropriate to ask the contractor to do that. Now, he may have the ability to do that, I don't, I don't know, but from a legal standpoint, it's not included in the criteria.
I don't think we should be asking any contractor. What I think we should be, encouraging them to hire people locally. But to require them, we may get rejected on a whole lot of things, because some skills won't exist in this community. But get, asking them to hire local and that type of thing, I think we ought to encourage that on every project where we can.
And I guess, are we still giving credit to companies that are located in the city? Is there anything wrong with us giving some credit to a contractor who says that they will, in their best, at the best of their ability, use local?
It would need to be something that's a-
Give them some benefits- Give them some benefits, you know?
You have...
In order to give them a specific preference, such as a 3% or 5% deviation, there would need to be objective. There would... Yes. That there would need to be a...
Different from a requirement.
Exactly.
There would need to be objective, measurable criteria.
All we do is give them some credit.
For making best effort. Making best effort.
Because we're giving people... I don't remember what the point system is. But when we give them points, if they're local and they're paying taxes, they get those extra points. If we could put some... A few extra points in there for contractors who utilize local labor, I think that gets to what you're asking.
Local labor.
Yes, yes. I believe that there are plenty of people in this city can do a cleaning up job and paint.
And we're working on a plan, I think, that Ed will bring to you all a little bit later, that Don and I have kind of been working on that kind of puts a plan in place for the city to utilize...
For small business.
Tiny contractors and small business people.
And another jurisdiction that we've looked at at the staff level uses a process where they look at principal place of business and the additional places of business that pull their employees from that particular metroplex area.
Doc?
Scott, let me ask you another thing, too. Every time contracts comes up, these discussions come up. I remember last time when we're talking about the janitor services for the city. We had... Overheard and saying that they were the people that was chosen and not... None that we had within our city. And I think Councilmember Winn, if I'm not mistaken, had shared there are other people in the city. So, I guess... I guess my question or point is, when can we see that list of businesses that are within our city that we can, you know, we can use that as an option? If they chose to not to bid, that's their choice. But at least knowing the fact that they're mixed with the crowd. I mean, I think... Yeah. This is what I keep hearing. And I want to know where that list is.
And some of them are because you're... It's talking to say janitorial contract. There are no major janitorial services in Missouri City. Just as with this kind of specialized service. The local preference option, which we have and exercise, doesn't exist for these because you don't have any local businesses that can compete for that local preference for this type of service.
Or even provide that service.
Correct.
My comments kind of is a composite of several comments that were made. But as far as this resolution here, I think we should move forward with it mainly because of the significance of it and the complexity of the project itself. However, from this day on, I want to expand it from just a local thing because that will isolate us. That'll narrow it down. Two for night, as far as I'm concerned. I think it ought to be just small businesses. And then we'll... And then we can go from there. And have that language in our RFQ and also in our bid process.
And we... As the mayor mentioned, the city manager is working on a program that effect. And we can definitely take this consideration into that to see about what we can do. And as far as the business list, I mean, we can provide a copy of the business list for the current businesses pretty easily. We can send that to y'all. One thing that we are kind of working towards in the matter of means of keeping the business list most up to date as possible is looking at different ways of obtaining that data on that than we currently have because it is challenging sometimes to keep it up to date. But we were working on different processes. And we've been talking to planning and zoning and a couple of other places to see about a different implementation on how we can keep it as up to date as possible on that. But we can definitely bring that back.
Scott, is there anything that preclude us if we have this business list and we know that we have a particular bid that we're going out to? And we know that within our business list, these individuals in Missouri City are on surface capable of...
Yeah.
Providing those services?
In general, the purchasing...
Can we put out a special notice to them?
In general, the purchasing department does if there is a business. And a good example would be the blinds on the city center. That was awarded to a local business on that. And it was solicited. And he was actually both... He was also the low bid. So, it worked out very well on that. But that is something that in general, the purchasing department does do. And if there is that type of service, they do normally contact them directly and say, hey, we've got this out. Here's how you can get to it. And then it's...
Because a lot of times, people aren't going to pick up, you know, that there is a bid out there out of the newspaper.
But in general, the purchases department has been contacting local vendors and for those type of things personally.
Scott, just to clarify for me as part two of that, you just said that... And they were the lowest bid, too. It's not necessary that we only take the lowest bid.
We have to take the lowest responsible bidder on that. And then there's a... We have a percentage allowed that, for example, they could be... If they're domiciled in Missouri City, it can be 3% higher than the low bid and still be that.
And that's where the local preference comes into play.
Correct.
Can we take this conversation at least and put it in writing and bring it back before y'all start taking directions on everything in the world that's going out here?
One of the...
Bring it back so we can make a decision to give you all to go forward with?
Yeah, Ed's working on that.
Yeah. The intent is take it to the Budget and Finance Committee with kind of the Small Business Development Program that's kind of been floating around a little bit. Get the Budget and Finance Committee to have some input and recommendations for direction. Move forward with that. Then we bring it to council.
Okay.
Because there's going to have to be some money appropriated for an appropriate study to be...
But I just didn't want all these ideas, get the full line and try to start reacting to them and...
Yeah. No, it's there. And it's... We just need to get it done, so. All right. There was a motion by Councilman Smith. Second by Councilman Emery. All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Item 10, ordinances are none. Item 11 is a resolution 11A.
A resolution of the City Council of City of Missouri City, Texas authorizing the negotiation and execution of an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the construction of traffic signal and curb ramp improvements on Farm-to-Market Road 2234, Texas Parkway, at Turtle Creek Drive and Farm-to-Market Road 3345, Cartwright Road.
We'll put that out.
Second. Councilman Smith made the motion. Councilman Winn made the second. Is there any discussion? Not. We'll vote all those in favor. Motion carried. Nobody argues about traffic signals? Let me remind everyone that Thursday night is at 6:00 is our first public hearing on setting the tax rate. The second public hearing will be the 23rd.
Monday.
Huh?
Next Monday.
Which is next week, which is also the same night that they're going to have the ribbon cutting for the animal shelter. See that? And on the 26th, which is the following Thursday night, is our Fort Bend Mayor and Council's meeting in Rosenberg at the fairgrounds. And Agriculture Commissioner Todd Staples will be in town for that meeting that night and to be the parade marshal the following Friday, which is fair day on the 27th, on Friday is fair day. And this year, Fort Bend ISD is actually going to let people out of school to go to Fort Bend Fair.
I'll flow in the parade.
No. I'm not in the parade. I'm in the parade in a car. Let him go there. That was another deal.
We have one other city announcement?
Yeah.
We'd like to make. The Long Range Planning Committee met on September 11th. At that meeting, by a three to zero vote, we recommended for consideration by the full committee when looking at the municipal court fines and fees collection contract that we consider a three-year term contract. We need to establish new minimums. Review the contract annually if those minimums aren't met. And the date that we show here is that, I guess, the RSQ went out on 9/11/13. And the contract will be approval... Submitted for approval by City Council on 11/18/13. Secondly, was a delinquent property tax collection contract. Again, we're recommending that it be a three-year term contract, establishing new minimum performance rates. Review it annually if the minimum performance isn't attained. There, the RSQ will be initiated in February the 5th or 30th. That should be 14, I believe. And the contract approval by City Council would be on 4/21/14. And the final item that we discussed was a vision and relations retreat for City Council, again, for council consideration. What we're suggesting is that we have an outside... I'll use the word instructor to work with the City Council to review the responsibilities and authority as contained in the city charter so that all City Councilmen can... And council persons, excuse me, will be... Can be brought up to speed with what our requirements and responsibilities are within the city charter. We think that that will help us as we go through a review of the comprehensive plan. We're looking also at having several retreats where I think the comprehensive plan is requiring, I believe, by city charter, that we have a review, is a five-year review, if I'm not mistaken, within five years?
Comprehensive plan, not charter review?
Yeah. Comprehensive plan, yes.
We just had the charter review.
Did I say charter review?